Recording and talk. Recording progress.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start. It's August sixteenth, City Council meeting. We'll do a roll call.
Jim Phillips.
Jim Richards.
Ryan O'Nychor.
Lori Novak.
Dana Bergner.
Okay, the agenda. Do we have, I'd like to add one item to the personnel. Item number five would be approval to attend, the mayor approved the Minnesota Mayor's Annual Mayor Association Meeting, September thirtieth to October first. Fee is a hundred and fifty dollars and the hotel's a hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
And I would also like to, from the consent agenda, remove action item number two and add that as to water and sewer as number six.
What now?
So, action item number two, under consent agenda.
Move water and sewer?
Yeah, I'd like to move it up to water and sewer as item number six. Action item six.
Any other comments? I make a motion that we approve the agenda with those two items. Adding number five to the approval of Minnesota Annual Mayor Association Meeting for the mayor and moving action item Fitzgerald excavating trucking pay request and there's next to the water and sewer, item number six.
Second.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Right.
Next time is presentations.
Do you have time?
Oh, okay, that's good. I was looking for videos and movies, okay, we'll go on to our public forum. A three-minute time limit per person. The City Council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please don't expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the City Council during the public forum, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and fill out the form provided. Speakers will be recognized only once. With that, I'll open the public forum.
Here I am again, another Tuesday. Here we go. New lower quest. I live at nine four five First Street Northwest. I was here last month, brought forward my claims about the water and sewer project and the damage to my property. Since then, I have emailed, as you all have been CC'd on, to Fitzgerald to check with my claim on my car damage. I got a response on the twenty-second of July, and I have not had a response since. The last response to my email on the twelfth, Sunny kindly recited, responded to my email asking for no further delay on this. No response since then. No insurance claim that I know of has taken over a month to deal with. So I don't know what to do from here, other than to keep emailing and keep calling and keep showing my face up at City Council. It's not going to be a fun project, and I really don't want this to go to litigation. So, there's that. My other concern is that we have seen an increase of speeders on First Street Northwest, which used to be a dead-end street. So we're not used to this traffic now that the traffic has been rerouted down from Center Street. And again, we get hit because we're at the bottom of two hills, so we get the speeders coming down, going west, and the speeders coming down, going east. So I think I had emailed Ryland and Kane and asked for some slowdown signs or some temporary fifteen mile an hour signs to be put up on First Street Northwest if at all possible. I'm about to get out there with a piece of plywood and some spray paint. We've got dogs, we've got kids. It's people are driving way too fast for a gravel road. And I'm not talking like thirty miles an hour, I'm talking like fifty miles an hour. It's fast, and it's throwing up rock, and it just, something needs to be done about it. So any help from the council that I can get regarding my claim to Fitzgerald would be greatly appreciated. I have both mailbox damage and my car damage to deal with. I'm also about to pay a thousand dollars to the arborists for tree damage, which I'm not going to ask for any recompense on. I just want you to be aware. And John said, why didn't the city have me come back and trim this whole street down? And they hire us all the time to trim the trees. And I said, well, give them a call. I'm sure other neighbors would appreciate it. So again, I encourage you to come down and check it out if you've not driven down our street and seen kind of still the mud and the damage we're dealing with. I don't know when the reconstruction is going to begin, but still not great. So I think, again, moving forward, all the other neighborhoods, there's a lot of lessons that can be learned from this street. So thank you for your time and look forward to hearing from you.
So second call for public forum. And third and final call for public forum. From at six forty-two. Okay, nobody's from the Sheriff's Department. Finding zoning, there is a minutes in your packet to read. Water and sewer. We didn't have a meeting, did not have a meeting. But Joe, you want to give us an update on the contracts?
Yeah, so obviously a lot of construction going on. Start with contract one, the wastewater treatment plant, that stopped construction. As we had talked about, their big push is to get ready for the precast panel delivery. That was supposed to be this week. It got delayed a week, so it will be happening next week. I think stops in pretty good shape for acceptance of those precast panels. You know, the vast majority of the yard piping is in, the loop road is constructed. The buildings are, with the exception of the admin building, which is a stick-up building, so it doesn't involve any precast structure, up out of the ground and ready to accept that. So they're in good shape for that. That's a big piece of the puzzle when they really kind of start to take shape. But stops done a good job of assembling all of the pieces of the puzzle needed for that. So in addition to that, you know, some other things are happening. We've been kind of talking about water testing for the two big tanks that were built. Those tanks have been completed, the water testing has been completed. Contractor ended up constructing a temporary well to drill that well and pump the million gallons of water, half a million gallons of water per tank that we needed. And the testing has been completed, and so those structures are getting backfilled and the site's kind of starting to come together from that perspective. But there's continues to be active pores on site. I think we poured fifty yards of concrete again today at the SPR contractor, so continue to work on that, those various tanks and components and that takes shape. They started digging the footings for the admin building. They'll probably be pouring footings for that over the next couple of weeks, and that building will start to come out of the ground as well. So I would say good progress from their perspective. They continue to you know, push around lots of different areas, but things are happening. Kind of in the background, we continue to work on shop drawing reviews and kind of deal with some of some of the challenges that we deal with on these construction jobs, especially in the environment where things are hard to get. And timing is important, so we're kind of working through that with them. We've been kind of talking about a change order that needs to be executed with a lot of the items that you guys have already saw. We didn't have a sewer and water committee meeting this weekend, and I had a record vacation, and the PM from Stop also is still on vacation. I think he gets back tomorrow. So between all of those things, we don't have a change order for you to look at. My plan is to get that to our normal water and sewer committee meeting next month and then have it for you for next, I guess it's September. So that's the wastewater treatment facility.
Question. So I know we're three months from snow, but that's going to be a gravel road from the cul-de-sac all the way to the treatment plant. Is that correct? That won't be paved?
Correct.
Correct.
Just like it is now, yeah.
So who is that, who's responsible for plowing still during construction?
Contractor. Yeah, it's the contractor site, so.
So we don't need to really worry about until twenty twenty-three fall, winter? Okay.
And essentially it'd be just plowing for their purposes anyway. You know, they're the only ones that.
Right.
And I do expect that they will work through winter. I think one of the big goals is that they close in those buildings and then all the internal typing and equipment and construction kind of happens. And so that will continue. One item that we did have scheduled was a tour last Friday that was rained out. Is that on the agenda somewhere else? I can't remember that it was, but we kind of talked about potentially identifying a different day or time that people would want to come out and look at that job.
And we worked around Sunny's schedule too, so it's all about Sunny. So what would work? How do you see your next couple of weeks scheduled?
I'm Monday through Wednesday typically, with the exception of the week of planning and zoning. That's Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, where I could make it Tuesday, Wednesday, Sunday.
And the only thing to consider, obviously, dry weather is strongly preferred. And then the other piece is Stop typically doesn't work on Saturday, Fridays. And so just from a safety standpoint and not getting in the way, you know, we can go the other days. It's just that there's, there's you know, there's cranes operating, concrete trucks, excavators. There's stuff going on that we've got to be cognizant of and careful to avoid. So if you want to see that, you want to be there on a working day, that's fine. We can coordinate that, make sure that everybody has the appropriate apparel and safety stuff, or we can do it on a Friday.
CNZ, September the eighth, Thursday, if we want to do a Friday morning. Otherwise, it's going to be a day of the week.
I know there's a lot going on this week and, you know. Tough time of year.
Yeah, this week. What's everybody's thoughts? Friday?
Yeah, you mean talking about Friday tonight?
That works for you.
September night?
Yeah. You can come and go on to it.
I was wondering.
Eleven AM?
That's what we're going to do last time, so that works for me. So I would also point out on the wastewater treatment plant, within the packet, there's kind of our monthly update. It has a lot of pictures, a little bit of text describes what kind has been going on and will be going on. So we send that little memo to the MPCA on a monthly basis. That was included in the packet. Before I jump to contracts two and three, any questions on treatment facility or what's going on there? Obviously, they have a big pay request in the consent agenda, similar to the last pay request, but it's essentially symbolic of all the work that they are moving through.
So I see contract two and three wasn't on our agenda. Why don't you go ahead and just make a comment?
Right, so lots going on on contracts two and three. You know, we've essentially got six utility crews in town now. And so that is one good thing from the standpoint of a lot more personnel and equipment are being assigned to the project, which helps facilitate getting things done. We continue to, you know, be concerned about schedule. There's a lot of work to do. Contractor is picking up pace. They are catching up a bit and making some progress, which I'm happy to see. You know, essentially, most of the force main between wastewater treatment plant and Hunter Street has been installed. There was a crossing of Hunter Street that occurred last night. I think they worked out fairly late the night because then they were required to get it done in one day and get the road reopened. That did get completed. That roadway will get paved back Thursday morning. That paving didn't affect access for gold rush into the city, but you know, we'll close that section of road down for pretty much all morning as they prep and pave multiple layers of between this and that. So it should go pretty quick, and I'm happy to see that the contractors, you know, moving that forward, which they are. I think they had ten days to essentially get that paved back. So that piece is good. They continue to extend the gravity sewer across, now across Trunk High Fifty-two over to Twelfth Street. They're working next to a Plausibility commercial site and near utilities. They ended up relaying a little bit of pipe there. They had some grade issues that we identified and they ended up reworking that, so they lost a few days of effort. They were supposed to cross Lake Katy Avenue also on Monday because of their height grade issue. They weren't able to achieve that, so they're looking to do that tomorrow. And so there will be a road closure there tomorrow. In addition to that, lots of activity on Fifth Street and specifically in Orinoco Park, that water main that goes from basically the downtown area over to the northwest side of Orinoco is under construction. A lot of that was directional drilled, but Fitzgerald is essentially tying the pieces together, so they made the connection to the existing physical water main today in Orinoco Park. They should finish that work and move out of that area, at least for the gold rush period. They'll have to come back and do some other connections. For example, at the entrance to Orinoco Park, there's another bend and a series of fittings that have to be installed onto the directional drilled pipe and then hydrants and water services and those types of things. So that work will kind of continue. But it won't occur over the next few, or the rest of the week essentially, after they get out of there. And then there continues to be multiple crews working in the First Street, Ninth Avenue, and West Center Street. Most of the activity up there is on Ninth Avenue and West Center Street where they're installing utilities. So they're continuing to kind of fight through the rock in areas. It's spotty up there, but there's been a lot of rock on Ninth Avenue, which we essentially expected. But they're kind of pounding through that. It's slow-going, and so but they continue to make progress up there and soon that forward.
So Joe, with that said, do they have an inspector up there all the time?
We do.
On the project? So Sand Tech is the inspector?
Yes. Yeah, we have three people on site. Jeff Barton's on site every day. Katie Oliver's on site every day, and Terry Campbell's on site every day.
Do you know, is there a requirement for big holes to be covered after they leave the job site? Because the one resident made me aware, he, well, because he asked, and I don't know the answer to it. They said, when the fiber optic lines were cut, they said it was like a grave, and none of it was covered. And he said, you know, kids could come by there. Not that they're supposed to be in there, but he said, a deer, whatever. He said, but it's not covered, and I don't know if it's a requirement.
Right. So the contractors, it's the contractors' construction site, their responsibility for safety. They're responsible for, you know, lots of issues, access and you know, traffic control and all of those elements. It's the construction contractors' site to control. Now that said, there are requirements and specifications and other things overlay that. For example, contractor's supposed to require or conform to OSHA requirements. So typically on an excavation like that, yeah, it's supposed to either be closed or fenced off. So a lot of times, those types of excavations are left open because they've they've taken the time or identified a private utility and they don't want to bury it again because they have to access it or cross it again, and it's very time-consuming and you know, there's some risk when you dig around private utilities. So should they be leaving them open and unattended? No, they should, they should be fenced.
And is that in our contract with them that they take care of those things? I mean, you say it's their responsibility, but it's also our responsibility to make sure that.
Right. And so, yeah, yeah, in the contract documents, it talks about, you know, how to maintain a trench and different sites and obviously maintain a safe working environment. So I haven't heard that or been aware of that.
That's not the first one, by the way. There have been multiples. There was one down in their street. It was left open for a couple of days. I mean, and it was right on the street, so you had to go around it. And it was not covered. There was, I think there was a cone there, and I think up at the top of the street on First Street, there was as well.
Yeah, typically you'd see safety fence around that with, you know, if it's in the vicinity of the street, you'd see, you know, a barrel or a cone or a series of barrels with that orange safety fence typically.
So is what I'm hearing though, so Sand Tech is the inspector each day. But in terms of the accountability for something like that, are we expecting them to have an inspector on site from the contracting company? Because I worry about that because I feel they, as a contractor, are putting the city at risk.
Sure. So, you know, they do have their own safety policy. They have their own safety people, people that are in charge of that, and they're supposed to be, typically they visit the site and, you know, make sure that people are wearing hard hats, make sure that, you know, excavations are done safely, you know, make sure that they do all of that. That's part of being an insured and bonded contractor. If you're not doing that, you're assuming lots of risk and typically have problems. So do they have that, those protocols? They do. Are they exercising them regularly? I don't know. Sounds like there is issues there that we'll need to follow up on. We do have a coordination meeting with the contractor on next Thursday that we can address that issue. Not that I can't and won't address it before then, but we'll follow up on, you know, I can make calls and emails, but we can follow up on the those specific items on Thursday. And if any of you guys want to come to that, you're welcome to come. I'd have to look it up, but I'm almost certain it's at ten o'clock. I think it's here.
It's here? This Thursday?
No, no, next Thursday.
Okay, I was like, I don't think that'll work. Okay.
So, yeah, Kane typically comes. A lot of times Ryland comes. Sometimes city staff, whether it be Sunny or Renee sit in too, so.
So.
Go ahead.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-two.
So twenty-five?
The construction does continue over there. We continue to send out notices about impacts to the public, so this is the week for a public notice to go out again. We send them every other week, and so we're sticking to that schedule and trying to provide the best information that we can to the, or to the public. The contractor continues to kind of throw us some curveballs and isn't always providing us the best information. Their schedule seems to be.
So when will Ninth Street, Ninth Avenue be completed, serviced and rocked? Any idea what's the schedule?
That's one of the things you're saying is that you don't have a definite schedule for the contractor.
And the, and the, and the big, you know, typically we know what's going to happen. We can look out and see what they're going to do over the next two weeks, but the next three months is the problem. And even the next, you know, I want a, I want a schedule that shows what they're going to be doing next year even. You know, that's, that's what's really required in the contract, and then we can take a look at that schedule and compare it to the completion dates and what we know is going on, and we can look at production rates and those types of things and say, this makes sense, you're going to make it, or no, this doesn't make sense, and you're and it doesn't appear that you're going to meet the completion date. And so that is a problem, and we have not gotten a schedule from the contractor. They continue to promise that they're working on it. They have indicated that they purchased the software necessary to develop those schedules and that they're getting the training necessary to put them together, but they're not simple.
So at what point do we, and this probably is what Jim was referring to, do we hold back some payment when they're not holding up their end of the contract?
And I think also they committed to this contract.
Knowing they needed.
Knowing that they needed to provide the information, and now today they're saying, well, we just purchased the software for this. I think that that is a big red flag in my mind, so.
Yeah, they agreed to it, so really they falsely agreed to it in some respects. So they, they're not meeting the terms of the contract. And I, we can get into what I have in terms of, you know, moving that item now because what you're saying falls in that, and I don't want to talk about the money part, but I will say.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Let me just ask one more question. So so the Ninth Street, Ninth Avenue, when that's completed, then the detour will be up First Center Street to Ninth and then over to West Center Street? When it's rocked too?
When that's rocked as well as the west half of Center Street would be, but that, yeah, so until Ninth Avenue in the west half of West Center Street, which they're continuing to work on. I think the sewer and water is largely in the west half of West Center Street, but they have utility services left in that area. And so my guess is those two areas will come together in about the same time. Maybe towards the end of next week, and they'll be able to start, you know, have the utilities complete and start constructing rock, and then the utility crews will move down to the last segment of West Center Street. And.
So to answer Laura's concerning question about how long that detour is going to go on First Avenue, west of Ninth Avenue, that will go away when Ninth Avenue is open and West Center is open. The west half of West Center.
Yeah, I would say three to four weeks. You know, because it, just because utilities are done doesn't mean that the rocks on the road, right? You know, so.
Services.
Yeah, it's going to take some time to get that done.
So with that, I can bring it up now. We can talk about what, why I asked to have the agenda item moved. I have a picture. I just want everyone to have a copy of it. So that picture was taken, sent to me by a resident on West Center Street on Friday. I got a call Friday morning. And that resident was supposed to go to work, and they could not get out of their, well, they got out of their driveway and they sat. They were stuck. They got out of their driveway and they're, and they sat, they were stuck. They, he said he was stuck to the axle, he had to have someone come and, and tow him out, get him out of there. But, and I was out of town, but to see this, I know our contract and what we've communicated to the residents. They can access their home from seven PM to seven AM. There's no way that they could access their home. When the street's like this. And I, I did talk with Jeff, and Jeff's been great about it. And, and Jeff agreed, they knew that it was gonna rain, they can look at the forecast, they knew it was gonna rain. There's nothing here that, that's gonna allow them. To get in and out of their driveway, and across the street from that resident is a handicapped couple. One of the residents on that street made a comment about the handicapped couple. Trying to walk up the ditch because they parked their car on Twelfth Lane. To me, that's not acceptable, these are taxpaying citizens. They have a right to get to their home, I don't care what Fitzgerald says, they have a right to get to their home. And I, I want us as a council to figure out where the accountability is. And how do we make them accountable, cause right now, I asked Jeff if there's accountability in that contract. There are no provisions for it, it sounded like there, there's a, a cost for mailboxes. To move mailboxes and a cost to do the trash, moving trash, and I, I will tell you. I've had calls from residents, one in particular, their trash, well, let's start with the mail. They didn't get mail for three days. Um, cause they said mailboxes weren't where they were supposed to be. Um, or didn't get moved, whatever the situation was, um. Then the other thing was trash, they said their trash was moved and, and you know, you excuse it when the, when the company doesn't pick it up and they're all. Picked up, but they also said. The cans weren't returned back to the homeowners, so they had to go through this kind of stuff to get their, their trash cans. I mean, I, I would have thought that they would have learned. From the First Street project, but this is the kind of crap that they're doing. And I mean, we've got handicapped people, Hiwatha House is just right up, you know, just shortly past this. And looking at this, what happens if we have to get an emergency vehicle through there, we're in trouble. So I, I'm just bringing it for awareness, and when we get to the agenda item that I asked to have moved. I think we need to talk about whether they get their full payment or not, we need, we need to have some accountability built into this. Cause right now, they can tell us to pound sand, it sounds like, and do what they want.
Yeah, it's, you know, a couple of things. You know, first, this is a difficult situation, when it rains, we've kind of talked about it, we're gonna see mud, we're gonna see difficult situations. Um, there's. Not a good way around difficult situations in these types of projects where we've got utilities taking up essentially the entire. Right-of-way corridor, the rightways are narrow, the streets are narrow, there's not. Alternate access, there's or ul- ultimate routes, and when it rains. Um, you know, to, to think that the contractor is gonna bring in, you know, six, eight inches of temporary rock and then. You know, waste it and then take it all off and then, um. Start their excavation and trenching processes and then it's supposed to rain, you know. Three days a week, that, that's all, that's literally all they would get done, so I'm not saying, I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying. It's tough.
Yeah, I, and I don't think Joe were asking for that to happen, to have, you know, that, that big rock base. Even just gravel, cause they do have to provide people access. Because otherwise, we should be giving them something back on their taxes, because we're not allowing them to use their home. To get to their home, I mean, the, the guy that got stuck. You know, what, what are people supposed to do that are supposed to put a suit on in the morning and go into work, are they gonna walk through this, do we expect that? No, we don't. Um, and, and for, for cars to be wrecked, you know, or I shouldn't say wrecked, but, you know, repairs like that. I mean, there's gotta be accountability, and, and I know for the price that we're paying. Should they be figuring some, some things in? Yeah, they should. Um, but, I mean, even just a load of crushed rock on here, it's not like they're gonna be out a ton of money. Um, and, but should they plan for that? Yeah, they should, because it's in the contract. That people are able to get to their home from seven to seven, and there's no way. These people are getting to their home. And, and the handicapped people, what are they supposed to do, you know? We, we have to be considerate, I mean.
Yeah, I.
We live in these neighborhoods, contractor doesn't.
Yeah, and I, I agree that contractor has not been doing a great job, especially in maintaining access. Um, you know. I've worked with Fitzgerald for years, I've kind of told you all that. They're well, cut, kind of rough around the edges and they struggle to manage projects and handle details. I've seen this before, um, and, and. I can tell you Jeff's out there talking to them and pointing these issues out and pushing them, and so are my other people. Uh, and at times so am I, but at times it does fall on deaf ears, and so, you know. Maybe we do need to do something with the pay request, that, that isn't a, isn't off the table option. Um, that, that we, we could choose to exercise. Um, you know, I'd also point out one of the issues, it's not like we picked the contractor, we, we picked the low bid contractor.
Right, but I don't think we knew, well, that there, they had this kind of a. Back, I don't wanna say background, but, you know, I don't, I don't think we knew all of this. Going into it when we said, okay, yeah, we're gonna go with the lowest guy, you know?
Well, kind of the reality is you don't, you know, on, on, it's not like private work where you have a choice and you can pick.
Right, you have to.
Contractor, unless you have a really good reason to not award to the low bidder. Essentially, they're a, you know, they've had some pretty significant issues or they're a non-responsive bidder. You have to work though.
But it's lowest qualified bidder.
You know, and they're clearly so qualified to do the work.
Are they? I mean, they're doing the work, but are they doing the work to, you know, to the quality or to the standards? That are in the contract that we, we would expect, to me, this is not doing it to standards, this, the things that happened on, on First Street. Are not necessarily to standards, you know, and, and yes, things are gonna happen, I know it's a construction site. Um, but we still have accountability to the residents in these neighborhoods. That, that we're putting water and sewer into, and if, if they're not going to be accountable. We, I mean, we have to make them accountable. Um, and, and things like this and things that happened down on, on First Street. Um, and Jeff even agreed that, why is it that we have to call these people all the time to give them? A boot to hey, say hey, this is not acceptable, you know? We shouldn't have to do that, it shouldn't always be a phone call to make them do something. And they're getting a lot of money from the residents of Orinoco. I mean, it's, I, I'm not gonna say they're getting a lot of money from the city, cause it's taxpayers' dollars that are paying for that, and it's. I, I've seen this kind of stuff, makes me feel like they, they don't, they don't care. They're gonna do what they want, and, and people are starting to get very mad. You know, like I said before, one of the residents said, are you guys going to give us a tax break? You're not allowing me to get to my home, I pay taxes on my home. Um, you know, granted, yes, it's, it's a utility installation, but, you know. We owe it to them to keep these guys accountable. So, so I'll be done.
Just for my identification, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm not that familiar with, with this view, the car is heading east or west?
He is heading, this one's heading east, or the front of his car is east.
Okay, so he was, and then, and these are his tracks, and he was trying to get to his house or he was trying to leave?
But he, from what I understand from him, is, is he got stuck and he kept rocking it back and forth and. And doing everything he kid, he could to get out, and I'm going to guess. Because he knew he had to come this way, he had to come east, but he got stuck and, and.
We're looking at the back end of the skirt.
Yeah.
So the det- the detour over to First Street Northwest is behind us or is it ahead of him?
It, it, it's behind him.
Okay.
So I'm going to guess, cause, I mean, you couldn't pass up, up top, cause that's blocked.
Okay, so he was.
So he was wiggling around trying to get out of there, he said he spent, I forget what he said to try even get out of there, he said he was, he was buried. And he did his best to try and get out. That's what I was told by him directly, I wasn't there, I asked him to send pictures.
No, that's, that's.
But he, he did say, you know, um, I think it, cause after talking with Jeff, um, I think it was. Three or four hours, then they, they, they did finally get up there, they brought a dozer up and, and they leveled things out with the dozer. Um, so.
So it's some assistance, persistence, they did come out to help, but.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, it was like four hours later, cause I told him, you know, keep me informed, let me know, um, but.
So what you're saying is, you know, they knew it was gonna rain, you're supposed to be able to leave your house by, before seven AM. So this, that, that work should have been done before seven AM.
Yes, and like Jeff said too, they knew it was gonna rain, so they should have planned for it.
I mean, it's kind of like, you know, our snow piles work. At night, because people need to leave their house in the morning, and so, similar.
And the, the one resident said, don't for a minute tell me that this is a construction site and I have to put up with it, I'm tired of hearing it. Um, and I, I'm done saying it, so, I said, send the, I told this guy, send pictures. I'm not there, um, and Jeff, Jeff did, Jeff went up, Jeff was great, he went up and he said, yeah, this is wrong.
But I think it, the point is, why do we have to have a problem and a, a citizen that calls? Some won't, some, some people just deal with it and think, whatever, this is, this is terrible, I'm just gonna deal with it. And won't call, why do we have to have those conversations, why isn't Jeff taking care of it from the beginning?
Well, I think he, he is, it, you know, obviously we address or he addresses, the, the team addresses complaints, but. You know, he's up there, he was up there right in early that morning talking to the contractor about it. Um, it's, it's not a mystery that when it rains, these roads, roads need attention, they need. You know, people and equipment, and there was nobody found that morning.
And that makes sense, I, I agree, it's not a mystery, therefore, they should have planned for it, you know? Um, they know what happens when, when you have dirt and, and, and a lot of rain, it turns to mud.
And that, and that morning, I think it rained probably till noon. I remember that right, was that last Friday?
Wasn't here.
It's about three quarters of an inch, I think.
Yeah, cause we canceled the tour.
Oh, right.
In advance of that.
That was eleven and it was born then.
So Joe, in your experience, have ever, you know, with. It's kind of like saying with reluctance will pay you, but, you know, letter, I don't, that's maybe not the right wording, but the point is that we wanna draw attention to. The check and here is a letter saying, we really would like to see improvement to your.
You've said it a million times though, I mean, um, I hate to, I hate to say it, but money.
Money dogs.
And especially in the schedule, you've, you've continued to mention that and that is incredibly important to the project and is required. To be given to the state?
Yeah, not the state.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's.
It's in the contract.
But it's in the contract.
And no, the, the sticky issue is, is basically the contract, cause they're, they're written for both sides, and you, you get paid. Every thirty days, um, that's in the contract too, and so, you know.
It's not guaranteed how much though.
Well.
I mean, because where's, where's, yeah, where's the teeth in that?
Yeah.
For us, for bad actors or bad performers, I mean. Like I said, otherwise he can tell us the policy.
Contract.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly, there's not, you know.
But I think for pay, the pay request number, this action item number two, repay request number six. I mean, they're asking for a significant amount of money. Um, but we are missing a, a chunk of the contract, so let's not pay the entire pay request, I mean.
And, and their response to that would be, you know, there's five percent retainage and, you know, the payments through. Uh, what is the date on the pay request, like July first, you know, well, it's. So, so, I mean, they've, they've gone from quite a lot of work, between. The point where the pay request stops, um, cause it, I think it's through the first of the month. Um, so.
But, haven't completed.
On First Street as well.
They haven't completed one piece of that contract that we need yesterday, so it doesn't matter if. They're asking for a payment, that's fine, but here's the value of the con, you know, the, the piece that we're missing, so. You cough that up and we'll pay the rest.
Cause and, and I have an issue waiting till the end, because at the very end, they could look at it and say, well. That's not done, that's not done, you know, there's, maybe there's some grading on driveways, whatever it is, he. The contractor can just decide not to do it and say, okay, keep the money, and, but this is what it's worth. And if we keep giving them draws that they want. We're gonna be the losers in the end, if, if they get to walk and, and we let this type of behavior happen. We're the losers in the end.
I don't think there's really danger at, at the end of the day that they get paid for things. That they didn't do or that they walk away because there's more liquidated damages than. Um, there is value in the contract, you know, there is performance bonds and pay bonds and, um, retainage and. There are mechanisms in the contract to prevent that, and obviously as we move forward towards that. We'll start to consider those things, um. E- even at this point, you know, just because of the delay in the contract and the retainage. There's a fair amount of money that we haven't paid them, that's not included in the pay request that technically they would. You know, they, they've all, all, you know, to, today, you know, they've, they've done the work. Um, on a unit price basis. Um, so I think, you know, moving forward, listening to your comments, there, there's two, two ways that we can pursue this, we, we can. Pay part of the pay request, we can pay none of the pay request, or we can say, this is the last time you're gonna get a pay request until things improve. Um, I think all three of them are reasonable options, given some of the issues that we're having. You know, there are some caveats to that though, you know, this pay request has already been submitted to. Public Facilities Authority and I don't know if we've received, well, we haven't received payment, but we will within the next little bit, little bit.
But to have all the signatures indicating acceptance, right?
Right.
Why, when we have it?
Well, you remember, because we have to submit it by the fifteenth of the month, you know, I sign it. And city staff signs it, so we can submit it to PFA and then essentially, you know.
Well, why are we discussing it at this council meeting, when didn't we discuss it?
We didn't have the, the pay request.
So why are we, why, we should, can we make them give us the pay request before? I mean, it says, it says backwards, we were signing, you, so what you're saying is, we've already signed the pay request, we can't take it back anyway.
The money's coming.
Well, we can, we cannot cut the check.
You cannot cut the check, but then what do we do with the reimbursement?
That would probably create an issue with PFA, so we.
Right.
You know.
I feel like that's red flags to them too, and that's probably something we wanna not tangle with.
The other concern I have, Joe, and I don't know if you know the answer to this or not, but they actually have, how many crews on?
Good six.
Good six. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking, those are not all his crews. Some of them could, oh.
Well, there, there is one.
Subcontracted?
One subcontractor with Ellingson, and that would be the seventh. And they've kind of been in and out.
But they all fall under Fitzgerald, is what you're saying, cause Fitzgerald got the contract, but he can subcontract.
But they're not.
And really, none of the work in this pay request goes to subs. This, this month, Ellison.
I'm just saying, those are the people I worry about.
That's a good point.
Your, your master contractor is messing up and then having that affect the.
Yeah, the city's going through that type of scenario a couple of different times, where the main contractor wasn't paying the subcontractor, that was performance bonds issues, and that was something you don't really wanna go through again, so. Not in this magnitude, it was smaller projects, you know.
They're all important, right?
Of course.
But I guess despite the timing, we need to do something.
Well, I think that if the money's coming and we don't wanna muck things up with PFA, then we can say that this is the last pay request that we will be paid out until these issues are resolved, that would be the only, it's the only course of action. That's really the only option at this point.
Well, and and I think there had, you know, to Ryland's point, writing a letter, um, I, I think we worded in a different manner that we, not that we would like them, it's, you have to do this and and maybe we put provisions in there. You have to meet X, Y, and Z to get full payment. Um, something has to happen, they shouldn't be able to just draw and know they can just draw and we're gonna approve it, and they can still do things like this.
So when are your meetings?
That's taxpayer dollars.
Um, the next month, the next meeting is, I think, next Thursday. So.
They can be discussed at that meeting.
Right, and that, I think, Jim, you, you know, since you have a, you know, you have, you live over there, you people are coming to you, it would be really beneficial for you to probably be at that meeting. And, and the maze picture, I mean.
We can do a meeting before that, if, if.
Right, that's what I'm wondering.
Busy, and that's nine days away, and I know Gold Rush is this week too, but we can do a meeting tomorrow if you want.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Let, let me check my work calendar. I'm, I'm more than happy to have a meeting. Um, if I can swing it into my calendar, I'll definitely agree to be in a meeting.
Let me know when you wanna meet, I'll make it happen.
I think a good question to be discussed at that meeting is, if we do have it this week, is that to not have this type of situation happen again, and it probably will, but we know it's gonna be raining this week, later this week in the weekend, so what is Fitzgerald preparing to handle the roads over the weekend? Are they gonna be like this, or what can they do to those people that uh, need to have access over the weekend?
You know, this, this is, this is tough, you know, things should be better than this, but regardless of what they do, even the best contractors have trouble at times. And when it rains, things get ugly, and I've seen it for twenty some years, it's, it's tough. But things can definitely be better than this.
Yeah, I mean, my rebuttal to that would be, yeah, things happen during the rain, but their track record has not been good. I mean, we could I think residents could forgive something like this if.
This is the only time.
Yeah, if this was an isolated.
Or if there was effort being put into making it better.
Yeah, yeah. And that, you know, and and I know it was, it was talked about at, at a previous meeting, you know. You had stated, you know, at a certain time, you know, or, or, or a certain day or time of day, for instance, like the watering, when that was an issue, that, okay, they just stop and they do it, you know, they make it happen. Same here, you know, before the end of the day, do something about this, so. I'll be done with it now, I will get, get you a date, if I can, if I can swing it this week, definitely.
Whether it's blizzards or rains, it's mother nature's hazard wave, but I'm not.
Right.
Being defensive here, but just the point is, is, but I.
The other thing is, pictures never do a situation justice, either good or bad, but this is.
And that, and that's what, that's what they were saying, and they said, you know, we'll, we'll send pictures, but, you know, it's just a picture.
And the reason I ask my questions about, I was just trying to get oriented to the point of, was this person driving the car could have taken the detour to leave, or he just wanted to go up that road because he wanted to go up the road and not take the detour?
Yeah, so from what I understand, he, he backed out, backed out of the driveway and and there he sat, so he was doing everything he could to even move.
Okay.
To get unstuck.
He lives right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he lives right there, okay, thank you.
Um. I don't know where to jump. But you know, Laura's comment about the Fitzgeralds. Lawyers not reaching out, I mean, is this something, how, what are we, how do we?
Yeah, what, what do we do with that?
What do we do with that? Like, I know Sunny was kind enough to send a firm, but professional letter. Um, what else, what's our other cour-, what can we do? What is the course of action we take to help out in this situation?
Definitely put it on the agenda for the, the construction meeting next Thursday, or whenever we, if it's not the next Thursday, whenever we have that meeting, but for sure, next Thursday morning. So, something in advance of the next pay request is that we'd like to have a commitment from Fitzgerald to it may sound like lip service, but I don't know what else we could really cause we don't wanna put, from a, uh, from, from reliability of the city, we don't wanna put the city in a bad position either by holding payment, and I know that doesn't go well both ways, and I know he likes to pay his employees too, so.
How about approving the pay request contingent upon the contractor developing a response to, you know, kind of a laundry list of when are you gonna, when are you gonna give us a schedule, when are you going to, um, you know?
Resolve that insurance claim.
Resolve the insurance claim, when are you gonna, you know, address the access concerns that are ongoing? When are we gonna get a schedule that, you know, you're gonna water on a routine basis? When are you gonna get a schedule that we're going to grave potholes on the road that we talk about on a daily basis, when, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So when we get that and we feel good about it, we'll get your check.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I had one more thing, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, I'll just, I know where she's going with this, school starts on the twenty nine, twenty ninth. And so what is the situation gonna be? How are the kids gonna safely travel to their bus stops where? You know, what's the plan?
It's the twenty ninth.
Well, Rochester, Pine Island's the twenty ninth, and Rochester is the week after.
After Labor Day.
I'm sorry, I'm not calling you yet.
The first day of school.
Oh, I see, school buses.
Classes.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So yeah, that'll be.
It's a big deal.
Consideration.
That's safety concern.
So add that to their plan, we need a plan for that.
And, and I, I will tell you, I am concerned about the bus coming up, you know, you know, that temporary road. That's pretty steep getting up onto his driveway.
Yeah, I would say the temporary road is not, yeah, a bus route.
Joe, do you, do you, did you last year have contact with the bus? Was it you, or does it, do you leave it up to the contractor to have contract?
Technically, the contractor is supposed to coordinate with the bus folks, uh, the bus people for um, Pine Island and, uh, Rochester, I've had correspondence with, they're both on, uh, they get the biweekly updates. Um, obviously, it's not school season yet, so there hasn't been a, you know, we haven't had any meetings with them lately, but they do get the updates and specifically the, the lady on Pine Island, it's a correspondence we've been recently.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, they're making routes for sure. They're out practicing, I see them.
Yeah.
Practicing even, so. Okay.
So before we leave the session, then, do we wanna wait till the twenty fifth for the construction meeting, or do we wanna try and?
Well, I think.
Schedule something.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check my, my work calendar when I get home, and, um, I can send.
But I think that, you know, I, I can put this kind of laundry list of items that we continually talk to them about, and they need to have a response to us by next Thursday.
Okay.
And we'll discuss that.
Yeah, this week, so be next Monday or Tuesday, and I agree with you, I think it would be good to get the letter out there for their response and awareness and the expectation, and Jason should be here too.
What, what time?
The owner. It's ten o'clock usually.
I think it's ten o'clock, I got it on my phone.
So are we saying not have?
The twenty?
So we're saying not have a meeting earlier, but put the laundry list together in a letter and then allow them to respond on that.
If you do it early, at least you could kind of.
Yeah, I should do both.
Okay.
I mean.
Okay, good.
They can hear it from us in person, they'll, they'll read it in the letter, I'll send them on behalf of the city, and then we'll expect our formal response on the twenty fifth on, on Thursday, the twenty fifth.
And would you say it was ten? Okay.
And if you, if you can comment, I mean. That would be good.
I'll put it on my calendar and see.
If you have, if you have three counselors, that's a core, so. Oh, keep it to two. And the other question I have is, is that letter, Joe, something that, that you, the mayor, and I should sign, would that give it any more weight than just, cause I, I, I'm just trying to help you out here because I know you've had these conversations with.
I think the weight is, is that you're not gonna get a check until we have a acceptable response. That's, it's not who signs it, I think it's more of, you're not gonna get the money until these things get addressed.
Right, and I'm just thinking, if he recognizes, we're all on the same page.
I think.
That is kind of.
So I guess the other thing to kind of think about there is, if you kind of prove this pay request contingency, contingently, who makes the decision is that Sunny and I, is it Mayor and Sunny, that, yeah, yeah, these kind of items have been addressed.
Well, if they address them, I mean, I don't.
But talk is cheap, right?
But yeah, we have, it's always ahead of the con, like, what you're saying is ahead of the council meeting. It'll be ahead of.
He's saying, who determines if they, if they, no, who determines if they, if they complete the laundry list? I think it's a black and white thing, it's, well, how would we? I don't think we can word it as a uh-uh, when we're asking for specific things. I need A, B, C, and D, these are not wishy-washy things.
You, you need to improve access to the roadway. Well, that, that's, that's, in my, my.
Provide us a plan to improve access with the roadway, it's not, how are you going to do it, or um, we need access, what do you think about that?
Provide a, a plan and agree to implement such plan in cases of.
But it's, it's really, yeah, it's, it's more not putting it on paper, but it's, it's putting it in action, right? Cause it, it doesn't matter what, on paper, people can say a lot of things, I mean, it'd be good to have it on paper, it's, you know.
But then that goes back to the schedule, and if, if they have the schedule, which they were supposed to have before, we wouldn't even be having that conversation, right? So it is black and white, it is, if, if we are asking for this and we will pay you once, once you complete this, it's the same thing.
And I think we need to be very descriptive.
Yes.
We can't just say, you gotta, gotta have, uh, you know, temporary road in, you know, uh, they can call anything a temporary road, a goat path can be a temporary road, but it, it has to be this, it has to be passable, you know? I, I think we need to put definitions around some of this stuff, or details around it. Because they can say, well, you're saying improve the road, I can run it, uh, uh, greater up and, and I improved it, so, you know?
I mean, maybe we take out the contract again and really.
You, you certainly can, that's, that would be my intent, it's just some of those things in my opinion are subjective.
Yeah, I get what you're saying about that, especially the conditions. And then mother nature on top of it, those are different than, which I think, I agree with Laurie, that's scheduled, that's a black and white issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Responding to insurance claims, that's a black and white issue, that's a really, you know, there is no, there shouldn't be any subjective things with that.
Okay, so I think we have a general consensus, a letter needs to be somewhat specific for a response for them at our twenty fifth meeting.
Needs to be specific.
Yeah, people attend.
So I will draft the letter and send it out tomorrow. And I will ask for a response by the twenty fifth. And in the meantime, Jim and I hopefully will meet with maybe, maybe the mayor, maybe Kane, maybe whatever, or just you and me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and meet with them and, and voice some concerns, not just from my staff and myself.
Right. And I think it should be saying by Ryland, Sunny, and, and you, show that, hey, this is not, this is not just a pushover letter.
Not a Joe letter, it's a city, a Joe, as it come down.
Yeah, we're not saying you're a pushover. But, yeah.
Okay, so I think we rotate with that direction. Appreciate the conversation, I thought it was good that you bring it to our attention, so, um, regarding this action item, we, no, I'm sorry.
So that was number six then, or we're gonna?
Yeah, we didn't do five, but we can.
Looking back on that after, can I get a motion on six first?
Can I make a motion that we pay the, uh, whatever the pay request number is? Pay request number six? Six hundred and three thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. I don't know if I want a pending, say, make a motion pending in the, not pending.
Contingent upon?
Contingent upon response to a letter that would be sent to Fitzgerald on August the seventeenth. With the city and Stan Tex action item concerns. Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Time a conversation, and I hope we go get some response favorable from them, so. On favor, signify, are we saying aye?
Aye.
Both same side? True? Jump back to number five. The, um, muscle survey report that's needed. Peter Woodland's restoration project. So are we doing a level one, or could it be a level one and two, up to level two?
Yeah, I think it's up to, I think they won't.
Sixteen hundred?
Yeah, they'll, they'll do the level one and determine if, but two is necessary.
I make a motion that we approve. Daniel's consulting proposal for a level one muscle survey. Start that over again, make a motion, we approved Daniel's consulting proposal up to sixteen hundred dollars. For a muscle survey for the Cedar Woodlands Restoration Project. Any other comments? None of those in favor, so you're probably saying aye. Streets and roads, just the road closures, FYI. Parks and trails, there was no August meeting. And that's an action item. Stan Tech has put together some more projects for that trail. We talked about asking him to come back with some proposals of grading, grass, rock surface and the tumulus. Three phases of. Rating, grass cover is ninety, nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. We wanna look at providing an aggregate, an average, aggregate. In addition to the base quote, that aggregate service is eleven thousand, three ninety-one, sixty in addition, so it's like twenty thousand. Five hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents. If we were to grade it and put rock on it. We can do that in the future, and if ultimately they wanna put on the, the tumulus service. Surface, that's another seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Well, it's a total of.
Yeah, there's no addition.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah.
Yeah.
So that is, the first quote is nine thousand, eleven and then. So my first thought when reading through these was. For only twenty-two hundred dollars difference. An aggregate surface would make the most sense at this point.
That's what I was looking at too, going to the middle one.
Would be that alternate, alternate one base, plus aggregate searching. And I think that's what we've done in the past on trails long before, I mean, I was involved with the city, but we. You know, the paths down at the, you know, even at. Hills Park, you know, we started with. Travel or even the park, the road, the park between River Park and Cedar Woodlands was. Wasn't paved for a long time, and so I don't know, that just seems like a good place to start for me.
And uh. I'm thinking the funding for this would come from our. CIP that we had in the, in the budget for this too.
Um, just a question, I'm noticing that this is, uh, I'm looking at the second one. A nine-foot wide aggregate surface didn't go, maybe down the other.
Well, see, you usually make, the area goes out a foot beyond the edge of the tumulus. So it's an eight-foot path and nine-foot area it surfaces, that's, so it's kind of set up for paving in the future.
Thank you.
I have another question, so it says the estimate for um project costs. Are X, and then the contractor for contracts one and two of the collection system has agreed to complete the work. At unit bill prices, so does that mean that? If we accept one of these? That we're also getting into, we're extending a contract with. Those contractors or do we put this out for bid or?
This is with Fitzgerald, um. And we would utilize a unit price contract, or the unit price, bid unit prices for rock and for grading and for culverts and things like that. Um frankly. You know, that's a, like multimillion dollar job, if you'd send this out for quotes. Uh, for a project of this size, the quotes would be. Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent more, so. We would be tied for, with Fitzgerald to do this work at the big unit prices that we have for the work. Um, but it would. It's, it's really the only way we can do it, cause I'll, in addition to that. Um, they're importing material that they're excavating elsewhere in, in town and they are required to dispose of, and so instead of disposing it. At a location under their control, they're gonna place it and compact it here, so that's why they can bring all this fill in for five thousand dollars.
Which I understand, I just think that if we're look, at, we're looking at the project and. We have a feasibility report that already states. We have a contractor, I don't, it feels very off to me and I understand the pricing would be, would be great, but. We're not even, we, we don't even know that, I mean, we don't have any, any contracts to compare it to.
Right.
And.
We don't.
They're not performing to the.
That's true.
Right, I. I would be against giving any contract right now beyond what we already have to Fitzgerald, based on what we're going through right now.
I understand.
So the dirt they brought in, without doing this, they'll still spread that out. And grass.
Yeah, and it just, yeah, just. Spread the topsoil and seed it, and then we'd have to essentially buy the fill in the future.
So we have to buy the fill that's already put in there?
Not that's already.
Oh.
Put in there. Right now, I guess I didn't know.
And we have to buy, if we go and bid it, like. Lori's saying, we could end up having to pay to somebody bring the fill in.
Right.
With the new contractor versus Fitzgerald just bringing.
There's no limit there.
Are they already dumping it there?
Yeah, that, that's.
So I just don't, I don't understand why another contractor couldn't, if, if it's already there, use it.
Well, assuming they continue to place some material, I didn't even know they were placing it there.
Timberline, there's a nice mound, that they've dumped a couple trucks of dirt there.
I guess I always wasn't even aware of that, but.
Well, I mean, that's really not our issue.
No, no.
No, and, and, and this is a study, right? That they did.
Well, this is just a, a little letter, a little feasibility report, it's based on the unit prices that we have, you know, the. On the big contracts, and so, again, if we.
Oh, we just let them keep dumping and we'll. See how much they dump there and then we can decide.
I mean, how, I, I guess the other piece is, how did? How did there even, how did an agreement on pricing come to be?
Through a feasibility.
These are Joe's estimates.
Right, but.
Well, we have big unit prices for like culvert.
But then did you, did you ask them, hey, if we wanna pave this?
Said that they would be.
We have big unit prices for paving.
So did you prepare this piece, or did they?
Uh, we did.
You did.
Yeah.
Based on the unit prices in the contracts, one is two, or two and three.
With the exception of bringing the fill material in, we talked to them, cause there's really not a. Unit price that works for that. So that, that was a discussion between Jeff and. Uh, Jason Fitzgerald.
Well, I'm always.
So we're providing, basically we're providing a place for them to dump the dirt and not. All to anybody else.
That's true, but it's more than just dump the dirt, cause it's, you know, cause they've gotta. You gotta spread it out, you gotta compact it, and you gotta strip the topsoil, and you've gotta put the topsoil, there, there's stuff to do. That takes time and effort, and then they've gotta have a dozer sitting there to make that happen, and a cheap foot to make that happen, you know, and. There's a cost there.
We weren't doing this, they still gotta do that.
Well, they, they bring it somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be building it up, they would just be leaving it like it is, cause like, the, what we decided, what you decided was. Once you visited, that it was a little bit more work than you originally had anticipated, so like, currently what they're not, they're not gonna put in a culvert or anything. So the plan isn't to do anything with it. This would include a culvert and the grading, you know what I mean, like it just, it would, right now it's gonna not even, it wasn't planned to be a path.
It'd just be what it was.
Right. So.
A hundred dollars, or is it one?
Now with a bunch of dirt piles on it.
Culvert and apron.
Which it can't leave with.
Two aprons.
Well, if they put dirt there, they would have to level it, right? I don't think we would allow anybody just to dump a pile of dirt somewhere and not do something with it. Right?
Sure.
That'd be my guess.
Yeah, and they will.
Now whether they get this contract or not.
What is so sunny, like how, you know, how like you, you know, you'd rather have it go out for bid, like you said, your, your, that's your.
Always my preference.
Right, right, and so if we did that. I mean, what's that into, I mean, we're not.
Cause to me, this gives us an idea what costs can be. Possibly, but I think we still put it out for bids. To be fair, that would.
And then with that, and then. Would you all feel comfortable with it was Fitzgerald though, and came in, you know what I mean, I don't know. Cause and then it's unfair, because they know that the low bid is, or, or they know their bid already, everybody else does too, it's public, we're right here, so, you know what I mean, it's tricky, this isn't like a.
Well, and you know, the reality is, we wouldn't have to do a public bid, you. We typically on these little jobs, we do quotes, you can get quotes up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with the work. And so with quotes, you know, you don't necessarily have to pick the low bid. Um, whereas if it's a public low bid, or a public rebid project, informing to all the requirements you do. Um, we can invite people to quote it, in this instance, you know, there's some advantages. To go with Fitzgerald, because their pricing is probably cheaper, cause it was associated with a. Huge project and there's some economy of scale and they've already got the. Uh, people in town and the equipment in town and they're already, you know, the dirt's already in the truck, so to bring it to this site versus somewhere else. Uh, versus what another contractor has to do is.
But if they still, if we still had them bring the dirt in, if we had them use our own dirt and bring it there, couldn't another contractor?
It's not your dirt though, once it goes in their truck, it's theirs.
So we're gonna have to pay them for the dirt they already brought in?
No, they weren't gonna charge us, they're just gonna charge us replacement.
Oh, replacement.
Yeah, so, you know, stripping the topsoil and moving it around and compacting it and those types of things. Which is fair.
We don't have to plant grass. Per the contract, they gotta plant grass, it's just matter of what they're gonna cost or pay us, or what it's gonna cost us to spread the dirt. Bill for twelve hundred dollars, we can get a culvert and two aprons.
And gravel. Twelve thousand.
And, and for the gravel, I don't know, just for the grass first, if you did that. Seventeen, sixteen, eighty for, for the gravel.
Breakdown?
I'm looking at the breakdown all around the.
Here, here's my issue with it. So, they, they needed a place to put fill. Right, we gave them a place to put fill, and if they put fill somewhere. Isn't it the assumption that they would have to level it, if, if we're allowing them to dump it there? So it's in a residential area. But it sounds like. Because they put the fill there, they automatically get to be the ones to get the bid, because that's their fill. You know what I'm saying? Something just doesn't smell right.
But that also doesn't make, I, I'm not als, I'm also not, I agree with you, because we didn't award the contracts. The fact that they dumped the dirt there, now it's on our property again, and it's still, now is it our dirt?
That's basically to ask.
Yeah, so then that's.
It's ours, I guess I didn't know what they were putting it there.
I didn't know they were putting it there.
I, I don't know if, if they did, I have no idea, I just assume they did based on conversation.
Didn't award the contract yet, the fact that the dirt's there, now it's ours, so, whatever.
But it's in there, you know, arguably, it's within their, it's their site, you know, it's their project, it's their site, so they. They can, they can do stuff like that.
Sure, sure, sure.
Theirs and when they. When it falls out of their truck on our property. Then it's still theirs.
So they, that piece of property is a construction site?
Yeah, they had to, they, they trench shallow all the way through there, that's the whole point, like, there wasn't, you know, they took out trees, they had to get. They had to make, that's what, they created a path that wasn't a path, and so residents were like, hey, can we make this an actual path to avoid that crazy dangerous hill?
So, let me ask this, and maybe it's a. Non-factor, but, so if we cannot get them to give us a schedule. For the work that we've contracted them for. What, what would the timeframe be for this? And, and by awarding them this, does that lengthen the? The performance on the other contract, I, I'm just thinking.
We're, we're awarding poor behavior. That's the way, that's my feeling, it's like, okay, you're, we're having issues with this huge contract. So then we're gonna add insult to injury and give you yet another contract, that's my feeling. Uh, I don't know if anyone shares the same, but. I ask myself the question, why, why would we do that? Um, based on what? What we're going through right now, even though they may be the low bid. They were the low bid on the big contract too.
So I look at this as being, helping our taxpayers get a path. Probably more economically than waging, and then if we do it, bring in more fill. With the new contract next spring or next summer, two years from now, it's not gonna be as cheap as it is right now to do it.
What about if we had an RQ and they get our quotes, just to. Get an understanding of what somebody else would bid on it, that, that way we know what we're really agreeing to.
And know what we're saving.
Yeah, right.
If it's already excavated and, and it's ready to go.
Could you go out for a bid for that and just get a quote?
Sure.
That way we'd feel a little bit more at ease of what we're agreeing to.
Oh, we, you know, for example, Schumacher is doing the other pathway. Instructional, that was a quote job, we, we solicited quotes from. Probably six or eight contractors for that project, Schumacher happened to win it.
And I do, just from remembering those, oh, it's not, obviously it's a much longer, bigger path, but, but they're high. So I think, you know what I mean, like, this is obviously, I just feel like just historically going to be the best option. So would you still feel, would you feel, I guess my question is, would you, after getting those quotes that we, we know are probably, this is probably gonna be lower? Would you feel comfortable or not? Awarding it to Fitzgerald?
I think maybe by the time. Those come in and we have to make a decision.
You'd have had a conversation about this other stuff and.
Right, the letter will have went out, we'll have, we'll have had conversation with them, that meeting will probably, well, obviously will have taken place.
And there's nothing magical about this year doing this, I mean. It could be done next year and we could see how things are going. The unit prices, it, it's a, I'm assuming that the unit. The contractor would probably honor the unit prices, their unit prices for the whole project, so. Regardless of what year they're.
So is there an expectation now that they brought dirt over, or if they bring more dirt over, that they'll expect some? Compensation to grade it out? I'd say we just wait, see what they bring to us, if they bring more dirt, that's up to us, our benefit.
Well, I think we, we need.
We're gonna go, I guess.
I, I would say we're gonna.
We need to tell them that we're not. It's not gonna give, you know, the city's not gonna move forward the pathway, so you can do whatever you want with the dirt, but.
Right, don't keep bringing, I mean, if you wanna keep bringing it, fine, but.
Because I, I think them dumping that there is, is, just like them dumping it at, at Bart's, the Bart's location, that's a convenience for them. Because I, I think them dumping that there is, is just like them dumping it at, at Bart's, the Bart's location, that's a convenience for them. That's a huge convenience for them.
I think a lot of it's going out to Mark King's.
Is it?
I mean, I think this is probably in a win, a bigger win for the city than it is for them, twelve thousand dollars. Or eleven thousand dollars is just dropping the budget compared to the rest of the project, but it's going to save us money in the long run, our taxpayers' money. That's kind of how I look at it, but I get your concerns and I think it's fair to wait until that conversation anyway.
Yeah, I say we, let's do the due diligence, get, get the quotes. And, you know, if they turn out to be the right one, then, then we put a. If there's a contract in that, then we, we put some teeth in it. So we don't.
So I'm, I make a motion, we, we tabled the path between Timber Nine and Sixth Street. For future consideration.
Well, we already wanna get their quotes before we.
I just say we just wait, see what happens.
Okay.
But obviously there's cost in getting quotes.
They're probably gonna get graded out, get grasped, and we, you know, then we can decide.
But based on what you get here, I can do, I can send out a, I don't care to. From the city is, you're not gonna be. Just, just, I'm just saying, no.
So you wanna amend the motion to say we just table it, but go ahead and get quotes?
Let's get quotes and then, and then we'll work on it later, but at least get quotes to know what the other costs are involved.
Do you wanna make an amendment?
Yeah, I'll make amendment to that, that we go and get quotes. Uh, to see what else. Other people.
The alternate, alternate one?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna go for, for two, I think that would make more sense, right?
You mean that, so there's a base quote, there's alternate one and there's alternate two?
Yeah, I was gonna go for the one that was gonna be the eleven thousand.
Yeah, so it's technically alternate one.
Okay, yeah.
I'll accept the amendment. Any more comments? All those in favor of the motion with the amendment? The polls by Jim, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Same sign, that's approved.
And you accepted that, was that a second then? You made the motion, he made the amendment. You accepted the amendment, but that's still your motion.
Yes.
So who seconded it?
No, I'll do a second on that with the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Resolution twenty-two dash nineteen for public works. For approving of seven items. And acknowledging proceeds from the sale of these city assets for. Nine hundred. And thirty-three dollars paid to the city. I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty, twenty-two dash nineteen.
Question, so the resolution is to go forward and sell these, do we already have a buyer, is this going?
Already been sold.
It's already sold in July eleventh.
Okay.
Yeah, the gross.
Second whereas.
Yeah, the gross was eleven fifty-five, and then less expensive. So this is a roll call vote.
Yeah.
So what you say, public works, equipment, is that the. Budget equipment or is that capital? CIP equipment account?
I think that's just their equipment.
Revenue into the account.
Yeah, it's not that.
Any other comments? This is a roll call.
Mayor?
Aye.
Councillor Novak?
Hi.
Councillor Burris?
Hi.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Richards?
Aye.
It's approved? The Gold Rush Day is coming, is everybody planning to be here Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
I cannot be here on Friday, I'll come afterward, but I will be here the week.
So we'll use, we'll use your card.
Yeah, I talked to Ryan last night.
What did you, okay. Personnel. Plans were made. The first one is a. I'll go look this up. A Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association Region Six Meeting, August thirty-first, Albert V.
I'm sorry, Mayor, that, I, we got word today that that was canceled. But it does, because it's on the, in, on the agenda, I would just like to point out that these are networking opportunities. That really are advantageous, and I, I would encourage. Council to support. The administrator disauthorizing, um, city staff to those.
It doesn't have a budget for ongoing education and.
Training fees.
Training.
City car training, yeah.
We do, and for that next item. Renee told me that she has exceeded or gonna spend her budget, but I, but.
There's like maybe a hundred, it's not, not much.
But, um. Carolyn didn't spend for three, there's some in there, I'd have to look for sure, but, um. But that is something that I would. Recommend sending her to. I hope you all know Renee's like a rising star in my view, um, in this industry, you know. Regardless of what avenue or, um, track she would choose, chooses to go on. Um, but, but this is kind of an overall kind of thing, so I would, I would ask council to take action on, um. Formal action, actually, you know, for both of those items in support of, like I say, for the. Region six meetings, you know, that that's just a given. Um, and if you wanted to do those two motions as one, um. Maybe you'll do that as well, either individually or together, I want you to approve them. Please, I think.
So the August thirty-first date is rescheduled.
It was canceled, but those kind of things, so whenever they come up again, I don't wanna have to work them back.
I agree with that. So I will make a motion to approve, um, sending city staff to the MCFoA regional meetings as. As needed or as often as, um. The, uh, city administrator approves and also approved sending the, um. City staff to the Clerks Academy Training, um, for the Deputy Clerks, September eighth and ninth in Seale.
Any other comments?
I just have one comment, you know, the, the region meeting, it says city council orientation workshop. Is that?
No, that was the topic of the, the, um. They were, they were gonna talk about city council orientations and also cannabis law.
Hey, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Like, is this something that we should be going to as well, got it, okay, perfect.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Approved. Discussion for staffing proposal.
Okay, so thank you very much for that action on number one and two, which means I have to check the calendar for September eighth and ninth. Am I in town?
Yeah, there's a.
Renee asked me a question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I am in town, oh yeah, because of planning and zoning, okay. Okay, so then, good, okay, um, but then I also wanted to talk about, um. Two things, one, um, I think we have. Renee and I have talked about what track she kind of wants to pursue, and so I, I do wanna prepare you that for budget discussions. I will be asking to bring in on a third person. That may or may not be able to wait until the twenty, twenty-three budget, un- until Renee and I finish our discussions. But that's one position and we're still determining whether that needs to be like a. Halftime, FTE, three quarter, um, well, not quite sure. But the other position that I want. I want council to consider for an immediate kind of bring on is, is posting for, um, a special project. So it'd be project-based work. To really bring together the physical files of the city. Um, as, as we've. As we work on, um, helping people determine, you know, what. What their property needs in order to accommodate, say, this thing that they're thinking about doing. It, it's, in my view, it would be helpful to have a property file that's gonna be everything you need to know about that property. Instead of. This is, for this property in this year, they did, they had a variance application, and that was here. Um, and then later, they wanted to do a lot splitter, so, you know, it, I, what, I'm not setting up the, the examples, but you understand what I'm saying, where, where you're not. There are different pieces in different places and it'd be nice to just have this. The other thing is, in doing that special project, we would hope to find out. Things before they expire, like we've discovered that we have a property that has, um, was given a, what's it called?
Special exemption.
A special exemption variance. With a term, it was supposed to expire, and that expiration date came and went. And the business continued without.
Requiring.
Yeah, and well, and see, I'm always thinking revenue streams too, right? So, so I'm thinking those kind of things, hopefully the person that we could get in for that special project. Will be able to kind of help glean some of those things that we really need to grasp. Um, for those. Expiration dates or termination dates, um, you know, this thing, the, the people were, and this came up because. Uh, a buyer wanted to continue the business, well, it turns out. One, that variance expired, say, ten years ago, and the other thing is, it, it clearly says it does not transfer. To a new owner, so that we were able to catch, but we weren't this.
So, and, and I, I like that idea, and, and I think two. Well, two things, wasn't there a software program that we talked about that was gonna keep track of all this stuff? You know? By property? Because I, I think this is, go ahead.
They are, um, I think we have to add the cups and the variances and stuff like that, we weren't thinking about that part of it at. At the time as more building permits, but we've also discovered that they've. Taken our big files and kind of uploaded them into like a text almost file, so it's not working quite the way we needed to and want to, so we're working with them still on that, but. So it's not like you can just search for, give me everything that occurred?
For this property, yeah, so the, and, and, and even to add to that, I think it, it would be good is, um, we. We have some businesses that, for instance, had to agree to paving their lot. We let them go, said, okay, you can, you can do this, but by this date, you have to pave your lot. Not saying, I, I thought there were some with dates. And do we ever follow through on that, cause I see there's some that don't have paved lots and they've been there for years.
We're working on a couple of issues, one was supposed to have been paid by August first.
I think there's a couple of.
I visited them. And Renee kindly took an irate phone call response. So, so yeah, there are those kind of things that we really want to, um, to, to catch on and. And given the workflow and, and responsibilities that are in the office right now, that really is, in my view. A project-based, um. Project that, that can be outsourced.
So would this be like a temp position, or would it be a permanent position? Support staff type of thing, that they, they are. Here permanently.
And continue.
And continue to be given projects.
I would, I would pose it as a special project. One time.
So they're here till the project is completed?
Right. Till it's completed or a given date. That may be renewed, you know, this is an opportunity really to kind of, without bringing somebody on as an employee. To, to just outsource as a subcontract and kind of. Get a feeling for what the person is capable of.
And then we, it's kind of like our seasonal, so we don't provide, um, benefits and, and things like that.
Exactly.
Could we use, what kind of person are you looking for? That has those qualifications to. Look at those files and know what to look for and somebody with zoning experience and. Are you aware of what kind of outsourcing firm would do this?
Oh, I'm not looking for a firm to do it, I'm looking for a qualified individual that's going to be able to. I don't know. He or she is, is going to be able to look at a document and determine. What address does this belong to? Really, and start matching those things up, cause we're trying to build the physical file by address.
Everybody, or just people that have.
Well, look, you got.
Whatever.
Right.
Well, and here's the thing, you know, we, at that, I think the last meeting, we got the state demographic refers estimates of. Population and households, right? So say the population was eighteen hundred, the households was five hundred, you're better off getting these files straightened out with five hundred. Than you are, you know, waiting till you get a whole bunch.
So when you talk about.
So it's complex, but not.
Yeah, because.
It's just really filing, so you're filing, you're condensing all these files into a property by property, so you're not.
Are you looking at building permits?
Particular zone or whatever variance is and.
Anything.
And then he comes on.
Fire permit, I mean, anything on that property. Yeah, that's smart, and then within that file, you'd, I'm sure have subfiles of. What type?
And this, you've seen this in other cities, in your experience, and we need this?
Well, I'm gonna say that, that it goes back to my pure legal days, when it was, when you were actually building a case file. But then also, um, when I worked for housing redevelopment authorities, as they gained properties, they needed to have. You know, files specific to, by units, not just by property, but yeah, by unit. And you're right, at some point in time, those kind of things can become more digital based, but. But because, because we're still paper-based to a large extent. Um, and providing that trail, physical files are still.
Question, would this help us become more digital-based? In that process?
It very much could.
Cause it'll come back in September with a proposal and scope of your. Special project for hiring?
I don't, I think that this is our, not something that we really need to take to council, I think that that's part of the admin.
I need somebody, so it should be a council action.
We already have the approval for the part-time person.
Yeah, but it already includes.
Michelle, I mean, Michelle, when she left, it's really, but yours, yours.
So you're back filling that position with this.
No, she's looking at another one besides.
Filling that position. That feeling is an injury.
Right, but that's that's kind of further down the road after, you know, that's probably October. Before we're kind of.
Put a hold on the discussion and jump ahead to resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty. And this is declaring a vacancy. Please, the Office of Large Council is term expiring for Lori.
What if I say name? What happens then?
We already told her she was a little late coming through the door to file her.
No, I tried to say.
So did you make a motion?
No, I refuse.
Well, if I can jump in before you make any motions and tell all of you what a pleasure it has been serving the community, serving this amazing town and watching it grow. And I've can't say I've loved every minute of it, but I've loved almost every minute of it. And it it has been a great experience and, you know, take the next next two years for for some and the next, hopefully, four for others pending the election, you know, just.
Great, well, it's a kind of pleasure working with you, and I think all of us can speak to that. And we value what you brought to the council. It was very intellectual, very, you ask good questions.
And make good points.
You made good points, so we wish you the very best.
So and I and I am, I will apologize. It is my husband's fifteenth birthday, and I just got nine text messages asking, where are you? So I am going to bow out before the vote so that I can't, I can't be held accountable. And I'll see the rest of you.
Yeah, I was going to go.
You can take all this experience and run a township supervisor.
No, no, no. Not happening. Going to take some time and raise her puppies, and our children, and our children.
Enjoy your evening.
Thanks, Lori.
Happy birthday, Stacey. Go to that.
Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty. So we will, or is any discussion? That go occur at the next meeting, because that's not really part of the resolution about filling the position. Do you have any comments?
Well, I think if if we just finish this part and then go back to where we were in the agenda, and then we'll have some discussion on how to fill it when we reach this item.
Any other comments? Any none, roll call vote?
Mayor Aykroyd.
Aye.
Councilor.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Novak.
Okay, back to you.
Okay. Okay, so you want me to come back in in September to talk about this project-based person?
Yeah, I think it'd be good just kind of have something on paper of what your expectations are and.
You trust my judgment?
Yes.
I just, I do worry, I do want to just say that as we move forward with the city administrator, as we're moving that direction, this is something, correct me if I'm wrong, Sunny, that would be left up to that person.
The administrator.
Wrong with that.
Right. And so I would like to see us move in that direction instead of bringing everything, staffing and everything to council, because really, you know, with a city, with a true city administrator, we personnel community isn't necessarily a.
Yeah, that would dissolve.
Right, and this would, and so I, I would love to see this work the normal way. If that's, I don't know if that's the the correct term, but I would like to see this move in a direction like we are going to be moving as a city, and I would authorize Sunny to. And I don't know if authorize is the right word, but I would like to see Sunny fulfill this position as she sees the need with her vision. I don't know what another month will do.
No, I I I fully understand what you're saying, and I do respect your opinion, because that's why we hired you to do these type of things, you know, so I think that's, I would just.
And kind of.
There's no, there's no time period either for hiring, how do you envision the?
Well, the sooner the better, because the files aren't going to, you know, just click into place.
And we don't have any thumb-to-the-wind wag on what it would take, do we?
No, I I think depending on the person, you know, if that if that person wants to come in, you know, three, yeah, two, three, four, five days a week, you know, and and prove themselves, great. You know, we may have additional special projects down the road. But I, it it, so it's kind of going to depend on that person. It's kind of, but I'm not, I'm going to say I'm a harder taskmaster.
Your what?
I'm a harder taskmaster than that's, you know, operating under some contracts. A contract is a contract to me, and so whatever is spelled out in the contract, I would expect.
No, I understand, I overlook that.
So so because it does include some money, I I would like to be able to post for the position, get some applicants, let them, and bring a recommendation to the next council meeting if that's an amenable.
That's great.
Process.
Do we have an idea of the hourly wage and and would? And I don't know, would we use?
I think we're.
Michelle's position? Well, I mean, obviously, this person wouldn't get benefits or vacation or anything. So would we use what we were originally budgeted for paying Michelle to help pay for this?
Do you remember what her hourly thing was? See, I'm thinking twenty twenty-two for a project-based person.
I think that would be part of your recommendation, we're not going to.
Yeah.
Sit here and tell you how much, I think we're looking for you to tell us.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, write it all up, and we vote on it, right?
So so I can do those steps, those preliminary steps, so that's bringing the recommendation to you? And that that's motion.
I'll make a motion to have Sunny post the position for a project specialist for the city of Orno. Should we bring back to the September meeting?
I second, go ahead. Jim second.
Does that make sense, though, the way I worded that, Sunny?
Any other comments? September sixteenth, does that count? No, I'm sorry, twentieth, September meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign. That's approved.
Four zero now.
You want to talk about.
Thank you.
Filling vacancy with what Mike shared with you, or is that someplace else?
Well, that's when we get back down to the new business. As part of that resolution, I didn't have been on there, but.
Anything else on staffing then?
Um, you added number five.
Right. So this is a annual, this is the first in person, this being in three years because of COVID. Twenty nineteen was the last year. So this is up in Wyoming and Columbus, Minnesota, north of this way, cities. So it's an annual mayor association, and it's just a Friday afternoon, all day Saturday event. And mayors get together, we have an agenda, and talk about different city issues. I think that's a lot of it, because we haven't met for so long. Another part of it is the raffle, and each of the mayors brings something unique to their city. It's kind of a ra, not a raffle, but a a bag of gifts, and they raffle it off, and people can draw names for draw for it. So I thought I would take something from Gold Rush in a bag. Maybe stop, there's something else from the city, we really don't have items like that. But maybe something from Camping World or Chad Tracy or some of our businesses. We don't really have a manufacturing, but just kind of something to recognize, something with Orno on it. Gold Rush t-shirts. Like a bag full of those, so. So that's all part of the festivities at that evening, so. So it's one hundred and fifty-nine for registration, one hundred and fifty for the hotel.
Make a motion to approve Mayor Rayland going to the mayor meeting.
Second.
Well, I believe with we need to add that it's hotel and registration.
One fifty-nine, one fifty.
So we have.
Say that word.
Two, two mileage.
Three oh nine.
You can pay mileage as well.
Sure.
So much per mile, because you just have hotel and registration.
Right, that's.
But your author, your motion was for the entire event.
Yeah, I think that's right, ready to motion.
That covers it?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Sign, sign that all those in favor, thank aye, 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 ahs. Great, thank you. Approved.
And Mayor, just to let you know, I wasn't ignoring your ten o'clock request to add that this morning. I just thought I had time to get it on September meeting and still.
There's a late breaking news, I think it happened three weeks ago. Update on Astronaut Night Out.
Renee?
Well, we had lots of food left. I planned on kind of what we had done for the year before, which with us getting a late notice, that kind of hurt us a little bit with having the attendance. We still had a great turnout, but not quite as much as what we had had the year before. But we also had the posters out and stuff months ahead of time, where this one was two weeks, so. I'll readjust the food possibly for next year, down a little bit, but I think we just had another check come in, and we just had the credit card stuff come, so I got to pay some bills, but I think we'll have about three weeks left in that budget for next year.
How many people picked up the numbers, the door prizes?
I think I have three left that haven't been picked up, three or four.
Oh, good.
So, and I gave them a month, so we've got a couple more weeks for them to pick up some stuff, so. And the leftover food was donated to the FFW and the food shop, so that. And elections, we gave elections.
So similar to what we did last year, if you just want to do revenue and expenditures, and appreciate that.
Thank you, Renee, good job with everything, pulling that together in short notice.
And great.
Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
All the setup ahead of time.
Yeah.
Thank you for being involved.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Fire Department, FYI, we have one acting item. Twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, which is receipts, receipts from selling the older nineteen eighty-four grass rig, more commonly returned, returned to its five ninety-two. We might see that truck in front of the car parade on Saturday, I'm not sure yet if I was going to do that or not, but that's been discussed. Let me make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen.
Second.
And the antique truck, I think, is on the auction now, or has it been sold, I think?
I think that's sold.
Some more proceeds coming, I guess, probably in September.
Oh, I was going to ask, because you're asking about a different truck. This one council had pre-approved going for sale.
Right.
I'm I'm not recalling that the antique truck received that same.
It's because it belongs to the Fire Relief Association.
Oh, okay.
That's supposed to see.
Okay, okay.
Good question.
And Sunny, quick question for you, did Dan contact you about getting kind of a summary statement for their meetings of checkbook and all that?
Yeah, I visited with him on Friday last, so, yeah.
So I suggested that he come talk.
So with the resolution, and they further be resolved, if preferences, this going into the CIP Fire Equipment Fund, four M Fund. That's the fund that you discussed with Dan. About the balance, so it's according to that.
Good. And he was going to, just so you know, an update, he was going to get back to me with a couple of dates and corresponding numbers of what the balances were. I think when Sandy did it, and then when Geraldine did it, and then, so I kind of have a starting point on on. I gave you that detail kind of thing, so so that we can get a current amount, and then going forward, make sure that they have that information, at least quarterly, if not monthly.
So I don't want to belabor the discussion here, but the four M Fund is an investment fund with the LMC, so wouldn't they have a balance as well for the city?
But isn't that combined, not, isn't the CIP four M Fund all citywide? And then within that, you have equipment, fire fund. That was my understanding, so we'll talk.
We'll get back with you.
Okay.
All those in favor, any more comments?
Roll call.
We won't.
Be legal, right?
Voice vote, roll call.
Mayor Aykroyd.
Aye.
Lori. Councilor.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
That's approved. Item number six, the discussion about iPads.
Emails, yeah.
There's email, I dash six in your packet. First question I had was how many? On a budget?
Yeah, you like me. How much is this going to cost, and and where, where, how are you going to pay for it? He mentioned both first responder and the fire department vehicles, so just the main ones. So I'm thinking minimum two.
How many first responder and a fire permit?
We got different fire trucks.
I got like seven trucks. But they, do they have a main one? Do they consider a main?
They have an engine, which is the newest truck, which is three, four years old, five years old probably. They have an old engine, and they have a couple tankers, I think there's more vehicles. I don't know what, I think we just need more background here.
I I guess I don't understand what they're used for. I wasn't at the last first responder meeting, I think it was actually. Do you know?
Yeah, we just was talking about before I got there. I'm not sure how to proceed without more background from them.
Yeah, I think that's what we have to ask for, is more background. And then my my obvious question too is iPads are are great, they're also the most expensive option of a tablet. And there's other tablets out there that do provide or that do have cellular.
Androids in the world.
You know, I just think.
You know, I just think that's kind of an easy look to to compare. I mean, my, it's obviously, it's my preference for sure, but is it what we want to throw in on?
I mean, they do raise a good question about Verizon government contract. Something for fire departments, that might be a very good.
Mm-hmm, that could be.
And it could be that they're, I don't, I'm not gonna guess what they're using it for, like I have some.
Well, maybe we can definitely follow up on those on our next meeting, Jim and I will follow up and bring that back too and then but maybe discuss.
Yes, I would prefer just Dan to go to the Verizon store and get all the background information.
Yeah, I mean.
On the contract?
Whatever the Verizon store can provide.
Yeah, but I I'm, I think we're we're talking about what would you use them for and how many?
Oh, the, yeah, the, I think that's a very good point, yeah.
Well, yeah, more details.
Well, and I can check, um I'll get you some contact information on state grants. I mean, states contracting.
There was a, there was a note in their minutes, if you read them, it said something about they've been having issues with their I think it was the first responders, they've been having issues with their pagers and not working with good cash. So, but I don't know really that that's what it'd be. Need use, but there wasn't, you know, there's really nothing in any of the note minutes to say a discussion about it, so.
No Wi-Fi, so they want to sell your service.
Right, yeah, it's gonna be in the I just have no idea what I mean, I obviously don't go on calls and so I obviously don't know why, you know what I mean, what what would be the use of an iPad, I'm sure there is something. Just don't know what it is.
Well, that's.
Could be, yeah, fighting.
That's what I was thinking, or recording them, relaying them into.
I wonder if Johan would be the one to ask.
I'm assuming this would be part of the twenty twenty-three budget too.
I bet he might be the best one to ask about that.
Yeah, it's built on their hands, I would say either either one of them.
Yeah.
I think there are.
Okay, so we're gonna bring it back next one.
Well, we'll follow, Jim and I will follow up at our meetings and then hopefully we get more answers.
Thank you.
Re-approve these bills or they they've all been paid or re?
There's an FYI.
Okay.
Except the only one, you know, that I I I included them all because my understanding is that um if they're less than five hundred dollars, then Renee just goes ahead and pays them, but if they're over the five hundred, then
With the last one, the t-shirts.
Yeah, is that? So am I getting that?
I wanna make a motion that we approve the uh purchase of the t-shirts from Hayfield T-shirts for one thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents with equipment and gambling fun. In a second.
Uh yeah, a second for discussion, I just do they, do they sell these t-shirts, how many, or does the whole family, do their families involve these t-shirts, you know, that's a lot of t-shirts. I just know because I buy them for the race and it's, that's a that's a large, that's a big price.
I think they do them for family and then they have, normally they have some um in stock for new people.
But these are just on Gold Rush.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Well, and they couldn't use them from year to year. Who?
I don't know, it says that the annual Gold Rush, it was just a thought.
Yeah.
Annual bill for Gold Rush t-shirts that they wear, paid from. It just made me, it, the number, the high price just jumped out at me, that's a lot of t-shirts.
I'm assuming that's includes includes the the lettering and everything.
Sure.
The dye and every.
Well, sure, but I'm just, I'm just, I just wanted to make you aware that that's.
Why, I think it is. Yep, all right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, oppose. True. Acting item under first responders. A new member, the Adamson, who's gone through the background check.
Make a motion to approve a little bit of Adamson to the first responders.
Any comments? All those in favor of the approval, the new member of the first responders, who is the Adamson, signify by saying aye. Oppose. Approved. Scheduling budget shots, workshops, what do you have in mind there, saying?
I need some dates for at least two, maybe three council workshops on the budget.
Looking to get one, sneak one in in August yet?
That's got one a week. We have to get, so we're ready to have it, I believe levy and set the September twentieth meeting, or you wanna schedule separate meeting for that?
Um I, depending on how how the workshops go. We may need a special if we can pace it to where um if we could have a special meeting that last week before it's due.
So are you on time with your Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, I take two? Except for the week of the twelfth. With the P and Z meeting on Thursday the fifteenth.
So like next, Gold Rush is this week. Next week, I'm gonna guess you're all recovering. Um so then if we had one the last weekend, week of August, so the twenty-ninth, thirtieth or thirty-first?
Thirtieth would work.
No, the twenty-ninth would not work for me. More surgeries.
Thirty, thirty-first look good so far.
I'm sorry?
Thirtieth or thirty-first look good for me so far.
It worked for me.
And that works for you too?
Yeah, whatever.
The thirtieth?
I'm, I'm, I haven't seen our house calendar, but I don't have anything on mine, so, but yes.
I still have checks, I must have money. So do we wanna do those um six o'clock? Is that work or you wanna do earlier or later?
Just do it earlier.
Earlier?
No, six o'clock could be good. Yeah, it gives us enough time if we run a little bit later.
Class on Wednesdays, we're not even.
We're, we're done with it now.
Oh, okay.
Do you wanna do Tuesday or Wednesday then? Or do you need another day to recover?
I should be okay on the thirtieth.
Tuesday the thirtieth.
All right. One, and then the following week is Labor Day weekend, week um.
I would stay away from that one.
Ah, okay, and then um so then the following week, twelfth, thirteenth or fourteenth?
No, we have those uh
Gold Rush water sewer.
Six, seven, I think, so we're gonna miss the six, seven, okay, that's.
We might want to have to do it six, seven day.
You have something on six, seven, you said?
No, I was, I was just, that's open for me.
I'm not open the sixth, but I'm open the seventh.
Want to try to do the seven?
Yeah, I'll do it then.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're waiting for Jim R. here. Good.
Should be fine.
At six?
Six card.
Do you wanna wait and do I do a third one or do you wanna see how we deal with those two?
Um.
Or tentative date?
Yeah, if we could tentatively do it the fourteenth or twelfth, thirteenth or fourteenth, I think those.
Twelfth and thirteenth, I mean, you got another meeting.
Happy the fourteenth, fifteenth wedding anniversary, so.
Which day was that?
The fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
Wedding anniversary, so.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Well, it's getting bigger.
Okay.
Next year is the biggest one.
Oh.
We decided Wednesday?
Wednesday to fourteen.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a tentative one? You want, right, Sunny?
Well, let's.
Or should we just plan it?
Yeah, and then we can always cancel if it's not necessary, but but that would be the wrap-up one. And if all goes well, then we can be approving the budgets. The preliminary budget levy or.
On the twentieth.
On the twentieth.
Can I ask you a favor? Are are these budget meetings, these special budget meetings, could you have a goal? Like list, like give us a goal, like the goal tonight is to do this, do you know what I mean, like so that when we get, I don't know, and and maybe, well, it might not work to look at it beforehand, like we do it regular because we probably don't know what we're looking at really, without going through it with you, but I I just do better if I have like a, this is what the goal is tonight to get through.
The outcome, the task.
Kinda, you know what I mean? Yeah, instead of just open-ended, like here's all this paper, you know what I mean, I don't know, it just helps me. I don't like numbers and so when I have to deal with them, I'd like to have a, that's a goal. Help me, help me help you.
I'm gonna make you an account, that's what she keeps on me.
Mark.
So, thank you very much and um yeah, I just, the first one, I really wanted you to kind of just as much as for me as you, getting that this is kind of your, how your chart of accounts is laid out, this is kind of what your history has been. Cause I know you're very into all this, but in terms of the council as a whole having that.
It was very helpful, yeah.
That was great.
Yeah, it was very helpful.
Okay. Thank you, so we took care of that.
So now the background for the filling the vacancy.
Okay, so um you have processed, gone through this process before and and we've now declared a vacancy and we, today was the deadline, five o'clock for filing for the elections.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um that will occur in November, so we have three candidates for mayor two candidates for council and we um have two council seats open. So um theoretically um we can, we could post or you could this, you know, other than Jim, who has filed to retain his seat. Um this other person could um be considered for appointment through the end of the the term.
So it's a four month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to January thirteenth, that's when we would swear in the new. So that's an option where you can post and take applications. Um I'm just gonna say that person has already indicated an interest, we could we could broaden the pool um and go through as you've done that before. Um a deadline and I would hold to that deadline um and make sure that it's it's held to. Um and the other thing I would say is that, you know, we have two candidates for council. There's in two seats, but there's no I hesitate to say that it's a guarantee that those are being, because there's always a great option to do so.
And it isn't it, isn't it okay to do nothing this close to an election? And I remember that being an option.
Not, we're not at that threshold.
Oh, we're not close enough.
Right, because you're talking August twenty-first and the election's not till November eight, something like that. So you still, September actually, we're full of three months related.
I thought that was a threshold.
Well, I like, I like the idea of just appointing or finding out who the person is, I guess, would be the first thing, but just the idea of appointing that person, that second council position. Appointing them for the four months. No guarantee that they'll be elected. Just like for Jim, same thing to him too, you know, but writing typically is half a dozen votes historically. Or we could
I do not wanna go through that process.
The interview process was.
Could we just? I don't know, we have, but could we, yeah, could we just see if they're interested in taking the the short stint, it would give them some a view into what what it's all about.
That that person decided they wanna run, that should be enough to tell us that he's in, that person, he or she is interested in doing it. So here's an experience for them. And and there's a high probability of the two council positions will be elected, so. So it's pretty low risk, I see it.
So what what are you suggesting that we take?
The second.
Candidates?
Jim is one, and the other person, whoever that is.
Okay.
Ask them if they'd be interested in.
I'm not sure.
It's been posted in the past.
Against vacancies.
Good, that would give them some experience.
Yeah.
When the ballot's ready.
I'm good with that.
You're saying.
Can you run that by Mike when he gets back from vacation? About us asking that second person running for council, if we can approach them about appointing them to fill.
We can appoint wherever we want.
Yeah, okay.
We, that, I mean, we can literally.
Deal, yeah.
Can we just do it now?
We can, I think that's the, I remember that for sure, that that is an option, either you have, you can appoint whoever you want. I mean, they have to probably agree.
Share the name with us so we can make a motion?
That's what I was just asking Renee, been trying to figure out if this is public.
I mean, it's been turned into elections, they already have all the.
People are into the county, although there is a window for them to withdraw.
Yes. There is a window for them to draw in between.
Yeah, you're right, there is, that's definitely an options appointment by, I can point somebody, so.
Or could we do it tonight and say, okay, if they're interested, we appoint them? If they would accept and then we're done, we don't have to.
We're just real traumatized by that.
Yeah, it just, yes, I am.
Well, I told Mike, I'm I'm not they're not taking me down that road.
Is that a correct vote? I think we got a consensus amongst us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do you want to? Do you want to um, is that the way you wanna go?
Yep.
Okay, um perhaps we could do this as a motion that's contingent or subject to staff reaching out and and making sure that they're okay with that.
Right.
For, because if if they're not for that shortest since, and then we would have to go, pick a different option.
So I make a motion that we fill the vacancy with the other person who has, what do we wanna call it?
Filed for candidacy.
Yeah, filed for candidacy. Um and it's contingent based on their acceptance to fill this for the remainder of Lori's term.
A second. Good, good motion in the comments?
Hopefully him one scared him away.
Wasn't that?
He can pull out and quit.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? It's approved? Eye. Pose, same side. It's approved.
Then theoretically, next meeting, you could have a note of office being.
Yes.
Theoretically what?
A note of. Final signature.
All right, Megan. All right.
Um, consent agenda?
To the proof consent agenda.
I second that vote.
And that is subject to number two having been dealt.
Number two is, with the exception of number two, you know, which is already passed. Oh, um, no, just a minute. This, uh, we've never. Discussion, okay. So Minnesota Association of Small Cities, we've never really been a member of them. A lot of, in the past, we've just dealt with, with LMC. Because they're our main contact with our, um. Insurance and just a lot of information that we get from them. So in the past, we've never, we haven't joined the association. I've been invited to their meetings and things like that, but we're never, never, but, uh. It's a little smaller organization, there is some lobbying that they could do for us.
You.
Right, I might try it for a year and see how it works, and see if we get.
Do you have a history with it, Sonny, or?
I have, you know, of course, up in the metro area, you know, where a lot of it goes to that, the two big cities, you know, the smaller ones. Like the, the advocacy that they give from them.
I mean, let's make a motion to try it for a year and see if it, if it benefits us.
We don't have to, it's already in the consent agenda, so we consent it, and it'll go through, right?
That's the only thing I want to bring to our attention, so.
Yeah, I think it's good to give it a try, same here.
And then, as long as we're in discussion, I also wanted to point out that Dana was reading financial statements. Who, who, who always, you know, just makes me dance when people are looking at stuff ahead of time. Okay, so she had two really good questions. One was, um, the attorney's Taft. Et cetera, et cetera, that, those, those fees, fifteen thousand and two at nine thousand dollars each, were all part of, um. That's on the invoice recap, both were all tied to your wastewater, yeah.
So then is it reimbursable as well?
Yes.
Yes, and they have been submitted to.
They should be available in July.
Yeah, okay, and then the other question she had was with regard to, um. Why, um, the building inspections under public safety were so high? And there too, um. Okay, so my, when I looked at it, my question was. Why is that so high?
What paper are you on?
Um, it's account one hundred forty-two thousand four-two-four old.
Page four, fourteen. Right? Or is that the wrong one?
They say the building inspection.
Yeah.
Spire.
Yeah. So, um, and the reason for that is, all of the building inspections. Get coded into that account. But one, I was like, why is that? Because one of the big expenditures, um, and I can give you. I like this report too, so that I'm, I'm asking the building inspectors to give us this on a monthly basis. So that we can kind of track too, and, because this is a good thing for the city to see, um, building activity. In the city, right? Um, but you can see that, that permit number six is the wastewater treatment facility. So. I'm thinking, you know, that's not. Something that, that should be coded, public safety, I think it's out in the project. Fund. And maybe, you know, maybe that's just something, I have noticed in your charter account, there are some things that need to be adjusted, and, um. I, I, you have a revenue count set up to receive the funds for all the building inspection-related costs. But you don't have, um, you know, a regular general offset to that.
They're kind of dispersed in different places.
The offset is all in this public safety. Other than you do have a public, a building inspections for the water fund, six hundred.
Right, right. So I've got a couple of questions too, real quick.
Okay.
Um, on page four, um, the insuring fees, sixty-eight thousand, six ninety-nine. This is what's standing. And that's all part of the, I see you have a second note, you, you bet with Joe, but that's all part of the master contract? So were there some items in there that shouldn't have been in the insuring fees? That should be part of the wastewater plant, or something that's not under the master contract?
Um, I, I think that's in red, because, oh, my key, and numbers in red, they're being investigated by staff. So I was printing this. The twelfth Friday. Yeah. Oh, yeah, Friday night, so I was, um, because we had talked about the percentages, knowing the percentages. As a, actual, as a percentage of budget would be nice to have. So I, I exported the document and then created that column.
Okay.
So, but I, as I was doing that, I was catching some of those things that were really odd.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when, when Joe and I had met, he talked about that, and he, he agreed too, that that needed.
Okay, that's, that was one, and then on the next page. Um, page five of fourteen, under bargain permit, the buildings, I think you met with the forty-nine thousand, almost fifty thousand dollars. That is used on buildings. To date. Is that one of those things you're looking at too?
Question, which?
Page five.
Five of fourteen.
Well, yeah, because she has it in red.
Yeah, and my note was. I met with Dan, yeah, because Dan thought that was odd as well.
That, we ran into that, that's what we talked about during our budget meeting.
Yeah.
That number.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And that one, I think I figured out that's.
And down at the bottom of page five of fourteen. Five of fourteen, this ice and snow removal, and right now, we either have a two- or three-year contract with our snow removal. With the Otman excavating. And I'm not sure if it's coming up for due in twenty twenty-three, or.
We just opened up bids on that, so we just, we just renewed it.
So we've gone out for a new contract?
We did, we just did, at the beginning.
So we don't need an RFP for twenty twenty-three?
So what was the term? Was it, was it far enough back that you went twenty twenty-one season, or?
Page five or six?
Twenty-three.
Bottom of, uh, five of fourteen, read last line.
Very buried at the bottom.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, I said nothing next to it, it's like, okay.
We'll check that. You said it was Otman?
Otman Excavating, here in town.
I know we just opened the bid, it was after Jerrylan left, so.
Yeah. I just, okay.
Okay.
And, um.
And you're saying it was awarded?
But you don't remember how many years?
It was only one.
I don't remember. He was the only one that did it.
At the bottom of seven of fourteen, just a lot of red, I think this is where the lumping of the salaries all gone into one category, and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the very. Last one was on. Page twelve of fourteen. It starts at the bottom of eleven of fourteen, under the capital improvement fund. If you go to the next page. I didn't see where fund four twenty, maybe it doesn't appear on this report. But it's fund four twenty-five, garbage. Five zeros, and the count is one zero four two five, which is investments to four M fund. Maybe that's not supposed to be shown on this, but that's part of the question, I think Dan is asking, too. Four twenty-five, five zeros, right, and then ten four twenty-five. That's the investments for M fund. But if it's, it's on the revenue side, that's what's, there's only. Property taxes at the bottom and at the top of the full tab. Maybe this fund is, maybe this line is in a different, we always saw this in a cash transaction report. Is where we already saw it. And those are some of those sheets that I gave you at one time, or we looked at them once. And I have some background there if you want to.
And I think I gave you one just for that.
Gave you like a full-page item, what's going in through.
In and out of that.
Right, through twenty twenty-one, I think it was. Do you want to set thirty minutes up for next week or sometime, Mike can come in? I do like these single reports like yours. They're nice. Little specific ones, Jim, quick questions. All in favor of the motion, we accept the consent agenda, with the exception of number two, signify by saying aye.
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 The motion will adjourn in nine nineteen seconds.
Pick a person.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Long, important meeting, I'd like you.